All right. Meeting is officially called to order. Can we have the roll?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Andres Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Erin O'Quinn.
Here.
Radek Krishna.
Here.
Kim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Bullis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Breaks night. Strike is excused. You have four.
All right, thanks Lori. And to hopefully make things easy for Lori, when you have a -- people are making a motion or seconding, please state your name first and then state your motion or your second. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Andres Spinelli moved to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Scott Bullis, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bullis. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the minutes are approved. Moving on to the next item of business. Disclosures. Commissioner Bullis.
No disclosures from Commissioner Bullis.
Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
No disclosures from Commissioner Bullis or Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner O'Quinn?
No disclosures.
No disclosures for Commissioner O'Quinn. Commissioner Gardner?
No disclosures.
No disclosure from Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Spinelli?
No disclosures.
No commissioners from Commissioner Spinelli. Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosures.
No disclosures from Commissioner Krishna. Commissioner Ron?
Ron.
Ron.
Commissioner Ron, no disclosures.
No disclosures from Commissioner Ron. I said it.
You did.
And I, Danielle Bailey, have no disclosures. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Gardner. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. I'm really feeling like I'm running out of meetings by myself. Let the record reflect that I am, to my knowledge, not meant to be running into some sort of thing where I am communicating with myself. Moving on to our next item on the agenda. I believe it is our public hearing item. So I'm going to go ahead and state our procedure. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limit established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all quizzed or representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be adjourned for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTA's, et cetera, will receive 5 minutes. Individuals will receive 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have a appeal rights relating to any action the planning zoning commission takes except for commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the plans of the commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for appeals required at the time of filing. Before I turn to the items on the public hearing, I actually wanted to see if there would be a motion to consolidate cases 2021-0114 and 2021-0113. Is there a motion to consolidate? Motion by Commissioner Gardner, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Any objection? Seeing no objection, those items are consolidated. So for the purpose of public hearing items, the petition will see 20 minutes. Representatives of PTA, community councils, et cetera, will see 10, and individuals proceed 6 minutes. Staff, can you hear the recording?
Yes.
Yeah, I gotta plug in then.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry about that. I was on the telephone because I'm double booked tonight. The Assembly is hearing one of my rezone cases right now at this very moment, but I'm here now. Okay, so I'll be following the order of the agenda and speaking to case 2021-0114, Holland Holding Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Acres 2040 first. So this is a request to change the land use designation of Acres 2040 from single family and two family to urban residential high for about half an acre. Currently, one parcel of land has two different land use designations. A separate application is concurrently being processed to eliminate the existing split zoning. That's the other case we'll hear. I wanted to point out in the packet on page 8 of this G1 packet. If you turn to page 8, it -- you have to turn the page sideways, but you'll see this is Exhibit A, and it shows the current state of the parcel and the proposed of the comprehensive plan. So this is Acres 2040's land use plan map, and it's showing the difference when you look at current and proposed. You'll see that the new designation for that white area would become the same color as the rest of the parcel. That's all one parcel. Now, turning to page 9, the next page. It's maybe a little easier to understand drawing where it's showing a dotted line around the area to receive the changed land use designation at urban residential high. And then page 10 of your packet is an aerial photo, and you'll see again the petition site in the chapered area. And then page 11 of your packet, the next page. This is what we call 100 scale grid map, and it's just a whole bunch of plaques put together. And I have drawn an arrow to the petition site. So you see that it's one parcel, and that's the area to have the changed land use designation. And then page 12 shows the P plat. So it's a very old plat of the parcel. And what this original -- what this plat does not show is the D-ed, the D-ed parcel tracked a C, which is kind of at the top, is not on this, but does exist because they subdivided through D, which was allowed to happen in the early 1950s. Okay, so I also wanted to point out that we have comments on this case from the public. And in terms of the approval criteria. Approval criteria A, there is a mistake in the land use plan map in Acres 2040. The land use plan map shows two different designations for one property. The majority of the four acre parcel is designated as urban residential high, but half an acre is also designated as single family and two family. This was not caught during the editing of the map because the property is also split zoned, and the land use designations follow the existing zoning for this parcel. So the approval criteria A is met. Same with B, it's met. Acres 2040 intended for whole parcels to be the same land use designation. This property is closely associated with others near Fireweed Lane that have the urban residential high land use designation. The property gets its access from Fireweed Lane on Eureka Street. The department finds that approval criteria C is met, and that D is met, and that the change supports Goals 2 and Goal 4 of Anchorage 2040. Then approval criteria E is met, and the department is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use designation of half an acre, single family and two family to urban residential high. And page 5 begins, of your packet begins, an assembly ordinance, a draft of assembly ordinance. Now, switching to the rezoning case. So this is case 2021-0113, G2. And there's also public comments received on this case. If you turn to page 9 of your packet, this packet, you'll see that this is all one parcel, but that the two wings here on the top of it are split zoned. So that solid line is not a property boundary. This is a zoning map showing how the property is split zoned. So Holland Holding LLC is requesting to rezone one parcel of land totaling 4.07 acres from R2A SL district with special limitations and R4 SL district with special limitations to R4, straight R4. The property is split zoned. This parcel alone is uniquely zoned R2A SL and R4 SL per Assembly Ordinance 1984-152. Research on this ordinance was unable to find the background information because the case is from 1982. It appears that the special limitations were intended to address a specific site plan for a development, but that never happened, and the property has remained a mobile home park. The special limitations require conditionally use for a planned unit development. So that's conditionally use for a planned unit development is very little used. There are some areas in town that have that, but very few, I think. Southport is a -- or Bayshore is a conditionally use for a planned unit development, residential planned unit development. But it's not the very frequently used way for a property owner to develop property through the conditionally use for a planned unit development. So no public comments were received from the North Start Community Council on this rezone. In terms of the approval criteria for rezoning, approval criteria 1 is met. The rezone is needed to remove overly restrictive special limitations from 1984. The special limitations appear to be for a specific project that was never constructed. New Title 21 zoning regulations, which are adopted, were adopted in 2013, provide many district-specific, use-specific, and site and development design standards that were lacking in the old Title 21 regulations. This rezone is needed to remove the outdated special limitations so that the mobile home park can be redeveloped with new housing. This rezone to R4 promotes the general welfare and benefits the community as a whole by providing more opportunity for housing near Fireweed Lane. The rezone also supports the businesses with the commercial -- within the commercial corridor along Fireweed Lane. Approval criteria 2 is met. Anchorage 2040 identifies the majority of this four acre site as urban residential high, and implementing zoning district is the R4 district. The transit supportive development corridor designation is meant for areas with residential densities of more than eight dwelling units per acre as a minimum. This is the minimum required residential density for buses to run consistently every 10 to 15 minutes. There are several policies within Anchorage 2020 that are relevant to this rezoning. General land use policy number 5. The majority of the property is zoned R4 SL. Removing the special limitations is consistent with the surrounding area. The proposed R4 zone matches the R4 zoning that exists today to the east of the site. The zoning to the west and the south is PLI, R3, and B3. So there's a school, and so zoning to the north is R2A and R2M, but there's steep topography separating these zoning districts from the land located up on the hill where this site is, the majority of this site is. The petition site and properties to the east and west only have access to Fireweed Lane via Eureka Street. There is no street access to this site from the north heading, you know, up that steep bank. General land use policy number 7. The site is surrounded on three sides by multifamily housing, commercial businesses, a duplex, a triplex, and an elementary school. There are single family homes located north of the petition site on Dawson Street, but they sit at a much lower elevation, and there is no street access between the two different elevations. Residential policy number 4, sorry, 14. The rezone makes redevelopment of the mobile home park for new housing more likely by eliminating the existing split zoning and removing antiquated special limitations that require a conditionally use permit for a planned unit development. Applicable policies from Anchorage 2040 are policy 1.2. Even if all the residential land use designations in Anchorage 2040 are developed with housing, there would still be a deficit of 7,900 housing units. This rezone eliminates the split zoning of this lot and removes 37-year-old special limitations that were based on old Title 21 regulations. Policy 4.1, which calls for providing sufficient land to meet the diverse housing needs of Anchorage citizens wherein where integrity of the residential neighborhood area is protected from expanding commercial corridors and non-residential employment activities. So the result of this rezone would be to clean up the existing zoning of this R4 zone site. The rezoning to R4 district allows the widest variety of housing options from single family all the way up to multifamily residential uses. Anchorage 2040 policy 4.3, providing balanced neighborhoods with diverse infill housing and provide opportunities for the development of affordable and accessible housing that avoids creating areas of concentrated low-income area of housing. So this is an excellent infill opportunity site to construct new housing at densities that support public transit. The R4 district promotes housing opportunities and allows a variety of housing types. The current special limitations require a planned unit development, which is rarely used in Anchorage. Approval criteria 3 is met. This rezoning is consistent with the purpose of the R4 zoning district, which is a multifamily, upper, medium, to high residential district. Approval criteria 4, this rezone is compatible with the surrounding zoning and development. The proposed rezone is compatible with surrounding zoning and development. North Start Elementary to the west, multifamily buildings are located north and west of this site. The south side of the site has a duplex, a triplex, for commercial uses. The north side has single family homes on Dawson Street. They're zoned R2A, and the Taiga Apartments, which is a 60, uh, 16, 60-unit apartment building, is zoned R2M. Approval criteria 5, criteria is met. People mover bus routes 10, 25, and 35 run in vicinity of the site. It's served by public water and sewer, natural gas, electricity. It's within the building service area, police, fire, park service areas. Approval criteria 6 is met. This rezoning will not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment. Development of the property will be subject to Title 21 site development, site design and development requirements, as well as a building permit review. Approval criteria 7 is met. The R4 zoning district is congruent with adjoining R2A zoning to the north. No special limitations are recommended to make the R4 district less of an impact on the R2A district since they are both residential districts. In Anchorage municipal code, Title 21 provides site design requirements for this situation. Both districts are required to provide setbacks from lot lines. The R4 district is required to provide L2 buffer landscaping to provide a transition to the R2A district. Multifamily residential developments are subject to residential design standards and also a public hearing, major site plan reviews required for multiple structures on one lot. Approval criteria 8, the criteria is met. The rezoned R4 will not extend a land use pattern that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The existing zoning east of the petition site is R4. The Anchorage 2040 land use plan map supports multifamily residential development in the R4 district given the well-documented need for housing in the community. And approval criteria, the last approval criteria number 9, I is met. This will not create a split zone lot. It does the opposite. The department finds that all nine approval criteria are met and is recommending approval. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? And a reminder, if you have questions, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone if we hit on recording. Any questions for staff? I guess I'll start off with some questions. Looking at the history of the lot there and the special limitations on, I think it's page 30 of our packet of G2. I definitely agree that some of those very much contain to a development lighter than a parking lot. We don't even know if there's gonna be a parking lot based on what may or may not be proposed here. However, there is some that could potentially apply no matter if it's a development or not, such as preservation of existing vegetation for the site, use of existing natural vegetation for site enhancement, a minimum of 10-foot natural wooded buffer along the northern boundary. Were any of these considered to stay on, or was there a reason why staff chose that they were not necessary?
Thank you for the question, Chair. The 40-year-old special limitations were reviewed and considered. The application was submitted with no special limitations. The department does not recommend any special limitations here. You know, this is two residential districts bordering one another, and the current code already has standards providing for this situation. There's setbacks, there's public hearing for multiple structures on one lot, if that were to be done there. District-specific standards, use-specific standards for multifamily housing, and multifamily residential design standards, as well as landscaping requirements, common open space requirements. Chapter 7 has a section on steep slope development. So that is to say that on slopes greater than 50%, no development whatsoever is allowed. So there are sections of this steep slope that are over 60% slope. So as I just said, I just let that sink in. Over 50 is prohibited to develop. Over 30% slope, you're required to go through a geotack review, and there's kind of like three pages of standards in our code for development on those steep slopes. I stood at the edge of this, you know, bank. You could sort of drop a, you know, a rock almost straight down. It's quite steep. I mean, there is a shelf about midpoint, but I think that the standards that already exist, there's no need for special limitations because of the way the code protects development or accounts for developments residential, bordering residential, or these different intensities.
Thank you. That provides a lot of clarity, and I think it's very illustrative. Also, just so the commissioners know, on page 26, there is that, here's the, shows that slogan. Another question I had is responsive mainly to comments received. A lot of people mentioned 150-foot buffer, or 150-foot area where no building would be allowed. I'm not aware of 150-foot setback requirements in any zoning area, so my question is kind of two-part. One, do we have that in any other area? And then two, how far would 150 feet take us to that, kind of before looking at it as a trying to figure out the way to strike with the two sections that go up? How far into that would 150 feet go?
Yeah, so the special limitation proposed by the neighbors to the north is based on the size of those two wings. They're 50 feet wide by 150 feet long. I think, let me double check that. I'm kind of distracted or I've forgotten. Let's see here.
That's what I got.
Is that right? It's the, it's on the grid map, but it's, you know, because it's photocopied, it's so small. Yeah, I think it, I think so the answer to your questions, it would be equal to the length of the, of these wings. That's 150 feet.
So as a clarification, and that proposal to have the same effect would be a special limitation, which is you cannot build on this at all, would have the same effect? On the wings?
Yeah, is that what they're proposing?
They're proposing, I believe, that it could be
There should be no buildings constructed within 150 feet of the most northernly boundary of the parcel, which has the legal description warrant pending. So yeah, they're saying no development within those wings. That's what they're, and that's because that's the closest area of the parcel to the Dawson Street homes.
Okay, and I think I have my final question. Thank you for finding. Let's say that the developer was gonna do some sort of infill. Could they infill into that area so that they could then build, or is that not possible?
Well, I talked about how steep the topography is, and the, the slope. So page 26 of your packets for the rezone shows, you know, on the west wing, 59% slope, 56% slope. The majority that's over 50% slope, you wouldn't be able to develop it. The west ones got 30% slope, and then it goes up to 61% slope. And I guess that's kind of the area where I walked up to, is the 61% slope and I saw it. So it's, it's, I think by code, it's probably not possible to be developed. But say it wasn't as steep as it shows. When you put in the landscaping setbacks and the other setbacks, and the fact that it has no road access, it's, you know, it's unlikely to be developed. It sort of, those constraints shrink the developable area. There is no developable area, but I think that, you know, the department's a little resistant to proposing new special limitations that replace the old, you know, 40-year-old special limitations. We don't know what effect they may have 40 years from now, and somehow it prevents it from being developed one way or another. But yeah.
Checking again before we move on to your petition. Is there any more questions for staff? Commissioner?
So kind of given the unlikely the two wings being developed, why should we rezon those and not just the other parcel and just leave it split zoned?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. It's a good question. So split zone property creates all kinds of weird complications about guessing about how the code would be administered or applied to the situation. Because we have setbacks from property boundaries, but then if some, if a property is split zoned, do we say, so does the whole parcel not be able to have multifamily housing? Because the R2A district is duplexes? Or just the, I mean, it's, how do you figure out what's allowed on which district? And when you go to the multifamily residential design standards, oftentimes it says, okay, your property is zoned R4, and it's adjoining R2A, you have to do more landscaping, greater setbacks, less building height, you know, all these things. But what if your own property is zoned R2A? Then do you start from there or from the property line? It's, it gets bananas. So anyway, it's prohibited to allow split zoning, and there's just, this is one of the few remaining places in the city that still, that exists. Does that, okay.
Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I'm curious if you know what the status of the Warden subdivision was in 1984 and kind of what the building was just north of this lot?
Through the Chair, Mr. Gardner. I was the one that did the research into the microfiche to try and locate anything, and I wasn't able to find anything. But I've seen old special limitations like these before, and it's me. You guys have been through plenty of rezones, and you see a rezone, and if you see a site plan, plan, a concept site plan with it, we start picking apart the site plan and anticipating what could be developed and place special limitations based on that. But then that development doesn't occur for one reason or another, and, but the special limitations live on for the next, you know, few decades, and we don't know, and it creates problems with, it's not how a developer would probably approach this today.
Thanks for that. And just to be, just to make sure my question was clear, I'm referring to the, to the development north of this property, where the, I might be wrong referring to that as Orton subdivision, but the, the community that's to the north, is that, was that present in the community for?
Oh. You know what? I'm not, I'm not sure. I didn't. Let's see here. The grid map will show the year that subdivision occurred. See if we can see that. I don't know the time of the plating of Dawson Street, because it's not showing, there's a Thompson there, and it's obscured. I, I don't know, I don't know whether or not those residential lots existed when, in 1984. But, you know, it's very likely that they, yeah, they must have, right? I mean, that's the logical thing, because I was born in the late 70s, and I'm sure these lots existed.
I can't remember in the public, in the comments, there was some laundry, like lived there for quite some time, but I believe also Commissioner Quinn was going to make the comment.
I was just going to say, we've got a follow-up comment that there's a 70-plus-year-old home.
Right.
So.
Right.
Commissioner Gardner, do you have any other questions? Seeing no other questions for staff, I'll thank staff and ask if the petitioners can come on, say their name for the record, and also I'm going to remind them that they have 20 minutes, and you can reserve part of that time for rebuttal. Please let us know if you'd like to reserve time for rebuttal.
Thank you. I'll reserve whatever I have left for rebuttal. Good evening, Chairman, members of board, planning staff. My name is Craig Bennett with S4 Group. I represent the petitioners tonight. I want to thank planning staff for the excellent work that's been done on this. This is a request for a recommendation of approval for a rezone and a map amendment. Currently, this property is split zoned and split land use designated, which is kind of rare. This is located just north of Firewave, west of C Street. The property is accessed from the south and has a very steep bluff on the north side with about a little over 50-foot elevation difference. And I'll speak to case 2021-0114, the comprehensive plan amendment first. There are no objections from any of the reviewing agencies. All of the approval criteria are met, and the department recommends approval of the amendment. As stated on page two of the staff analysis, this is correcting a mistake in the land use plan map. The map is currently showing two different designations across one property, as shown on page eight. This is a housekeeping, this housekeeping will bring the small northwest corner of the property under the same use, land use designation as the rest of the tract. Moving on to case 2021-0113, this is for the rezone of R2ASL and R4SL to R4 zoning. This property is currently split zoned, as shown on page nine, exhibit eight. Most of the property is zoned R4SL, and we are asking for it to be brought into performance under just one zoning of R4. The existing zoning for 1984 appears to be specifically addressing a site plan that was never completed and we have no record of. Rezoning the site to a common R4 zoning designation will allow for future development of the site with a code-compliant residential tract. And for the rezone, there are no objections from any of the reviewing agencies. All of the approval criteria are met, and the department recommends approval. And thank you for your consideration. I'd like to save the rest of my time for rebuttal.
You have 17 minutes and 36 seconds for me for rebuttal. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you. Now I'm going to call on people here. Does anyone here wish to provide public testimony? Nope. All right, then let's go ahead and call the people.
The number you have reached is not in service. This is a recording.
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Hearing case number 22020210114 and 0113. Are you, sorry, are you testifying as behalf of an individual or an organization?
I'm testifying as an individual.
All right, you'll have six minutes. Please start with your name.
My name is Sarah Hollis Mickey, and I reside at 2141 Dawson Street. I'm calling to testify in, in response to this case for zoning. I live at the end of our Dawson Street community, and our property abuts the lot in question. In this neighborhood of families, we are concerned that this rezone may make vulnerable a deep portion of property to development at a future moment. We're cognizant and understand the profession for rezoning at this time, and think it makes sense. However, we'd like a special limitation to be, to amend the ordinance. Because we're concerned about a variety of things, I'd like to bring to the commission concern about the environment of our area. Every spring, we have a mother who's been dating to use this property, this particular property in question, to traverse the area as well as links and arctic air, and a variety of bird wildlife that reside in this area. Should it be developed at a future date, I have concern about the impact for our local environment. I know that other members of my community have requested to testify to speak to other concerns that include issues impacting our everyday lives and our families. So we are hopeful to include a special limitation on the ordinance, which was provided in written testimony by a number of our, members of our community. I'm glad to read it if that's useful, but I believe that a number of us have stated it in response to both of these, both of these cases.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
The commissioners, if you have questions, bring your hand and shout it in front of the court.
Hello? Hello, is this Donna Baldwin?
Yes, it is.
This is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for the testimony in case 20210114 and 0113. Are you calling as an individual or a group?
As an individual.
All right, you have six minutes for testimony. Please start with your name, and then you can begin.
Sure, my name is David Penn. I'm a resident on Dawson Street, which is just north of the proposed section on Eureka Street, and was calling to request special limitations on that rezoning, as the neighborhood in which I live is directly adjacent to that parcel land, is at the bottom of a hill, which that, that part of land comes down into Dawson Street. Concern with the redevelopment, as proposed, is that it will drastically change the nature of our, of our neighborhood right now. There's this kind of wooded border before you get to area at the top of the hill where other structures and homes are and such, and that area is supposed to be rezoned. If building was to occur up to the northernmost border of the proposed area, it would block out sun in our neighborhood, it would change the atmosphere and nature of the neighborhood, it would likely increase the amount of, of people and traffic and such through our, through our yards. As stands, that area right now has healthy wildlife population that goes through, we get moose frequently in our yard, and links and other, other animals. Additionally, we currently, you know, with trees there, it makes a nice, nice boundary for the neighborhood. So just calling to express concern about the proposed rezoning, clearly quite a bit of the, the part of the, the property that is to be rezoned would have less effect on our neighborhood, but specifically the areas, the northernmost border, which would be against the home in which I live, as well as my neighbor's homes, even surrounding one of my neighbor's homes. So wanted to, to request that specialty, special limitations on, on this rezoning.
Thank you for your testimony. I don't see any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Is this Ellie?
Yes, it is.
Ellie, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for testimony on case 20210113 and 0114. Are you calling as an individual or representative of group?
An individual.
All right, and you have six minutes to provide testimony. Please state your full name, and then you can start.
Okay. My name is Elliot Shaya, and I live at 2152 Dawson Street, so that's just at the end of Dawson Street. And I get to start off with, I'd like to just thank the people at S4 Group and the Planning and Zoning Commission for taking the time to talk with me over the past couple of months to, to understand this issue and the reason, and the reasons behind this. So I think I have, I have an understanding of that. And then just to express that our neighbors here at Dawson still have some concerns over the rezones, that are, due to the topography of this area, the, the area that's actually to be rezoned is just to the south of us and up a very steep hill, and so any buildings that would be constructed at the top of the hill would really shade our, you know, completely shade our properties, and it's also just really impede our privacy. Right now, a lot of single-family homes with dead-end streets, and so the, the change up on top of the hill, any potential building up there could really change the feel of the area. So we feel like that's kind of a unique situation. In addition, my property, my family's property, is surrounded on three sides by the area that's looking to be rezoned, so just on a personal level, it, it would affect us quite a bit to be kind of surrounded by an R4 rezon for, when we have a single-family home. So those are our main concerns. And we were hoping that we would like to see put in place, and I've talked with, with the other neighbors here on Dawson Street, a special limitation that could hopefully, you know, be a compromise that would help everyone on Dawson Street feel comfortable with the rezoning going ahead, and also not be too prohibitive, hopefully, for helping this area, you know, to, to be rezoned in a, in a way that's workable and that can be developable. So the special limitation that I would like to propose is there shall be no buildings constructed within 100 feet of the most northerly boundary of the parcel, which has a legal description, Orton and PTN, except deeded tract. The area on which construction of buildings is prohibited is that which lies to the east and to the west of Track C of Orton subdivision, as shown on the SW1530 grade map. So we feel that, that that special limitation would help us to feel really comfortable with this rezone, that that would allow for the privacy and access to some life that we're looking for.
I'm a resident on Dawson Street, which is just north of the proposed section on Eureka Street, and was calling to request special limitations on that rezoning as the neighborhood in which I live is directly adjacent to that parcel land is at the bottom of a hill, which that part of land comes down into Dawson Street. Concern with the redevelopment, as proposed, is that it will drastically change the nature of our neighborhood right now. There's this kind of wooded border before you get to area at the top of the hill where other structures and homes are and such, and that area is supposed to be rezoned. If building was to occur up to the northernmost border of the proposed area, it would block out sun in our neighborhood, it would change the atmosphere and nature of the neighborhood, it would likely increase the amount of people and traffic and such through our yards. As stands, that area right now has healthy wildlife population that goes through, we get moose frequently in our yard, lynx and other animals. Additionally, currently with trees there that makes a nice boundary for the neighborhood. So just calling to express concern about the proposed rezoning, clearly quite a bit of the part of the property that is to be rezoned would have less effect on our neighborhood, but specifically the areas, the northernmost border, which would be against the home in which I live, as well as my neighbor's homes, even surrounding one of my neighbor's homes. So wanted to request that special limitations on this rezoning.
Thank you for your testimony. I don't see any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Is this Ellie?
Yes, Miss.
Ellie, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for testimony on case 2021-0113 and 0114. Are you calling as an individual or representative of a group?
An individual.
All right, you have six minutes to provide testimony. Please state your full name and then you can start.
Okay, my name is Elliot Shaya, and I live at 2152 Dawson Street, so that's just at the end of Dawson Street. And I guess to start off with, I'd like to just thank the people at S Board, the Planning and Zoning Commission for taking the time to talk with me over the past couple months to understand this issue and the reason and the reasons behind this. So I think I have an understanding of that. And then just to address that our neighbors here at Dawson still have concerns over the rezon, that are due to the topography of this area. The area that's actually to be rezoned is just to the south of us and up a very deep hill, and so any buildings that would be constructed at the top of the hill would really shade our, you know, could completely shade our property, and it also just really impede our privacy. Right now, a lot of single-family homes with dead-end streets, and so the change up on top of the hill, any potential building up there could really change the feel of the area. So we feel like that's kind of a new situation. In addition, my property, my family's property, is surrounded on three sides by the area that's looking to be rezoned, so just on a personal level, it would affect us quite a bit to be kind of surrounded by an R4 rezon for us when we have a single-family home. So those are our main concerns. And we were hoping that we would like to see put in place, and I've talked with other neighbors here on Dawson Street, special limitations that could hopefully, you know, be a compromise that would help everyone on Dawson Street feel comfortable with the rezon going ahead, and also not be too prohibitive, hopefully, for helping this area, you know, to be rezoned in a way that's workable and that can be developable. So the special limitation that I would like to propose is there shall be no buildings constructed within 100 feet of the most northerly boundary of the parcel, which has a legal description Wharton NPTN except Dated Track. The area on which construction of buildings is prohibited is that which lies to the east and to the west of track C of Wharton subdivision, as shown on the SW 1530 grade map. So we feel that that special limitation would help us to feel really comfortable with this rezon, that that would allow for the privacy and access to some life that we're looking for, and hopefully be something that is workable for, you know, for development and planning and zoning as well. So, I think that's my statement. If any questions?
There are no questions at this time. I'd like to thank you for your testimony. Actually, I do have a question. You mentioned expressing these concerns to staff. Did staff respond at all about the sloping and building requirements?
I'm having a little bit hard to hear and there's a lot of echo. I think what I heard... Sorry, again?
Did staff respond to your comments and concerns regarding the sloping of the lot and what is and is not allowed to be built in sloped areas?
I'm not quite hearing your full question, but I think what you're saying is did I speak with someone about the slope of the area? And yes, I spoke with Kate at S Board Group, and she showed me the slope map, which was somewhat reassuring because a portion of the area is very sloped, and I don't think would be buildable. But there is kind of after the very deep slope, it kind of levels out for a little while. And from what I gathered from talking with her, it was unlikely that that would be an area that people would pursue to put buildings, but it's not entirely off the table. And so that's kind of why we were asking for the special limitations, because that just gives us something that we're very confident in. Because, you know, as of now, there's many special limitations that are put in place on this area in addition to it being R2, and so that's a lot of reassurance for us in the residential, you know, R2 neighborhood. And so, just going off the low, the slope gives some protection, seems a little uncertain to me and some of the neighbors. So I hope that answers your question. Did I answer your question?
Yes, that answers my question. And I also may get Francis to come up to the microphone here. Sorry, Mr. McLaughlin, to come up to the microphone, because I'm gonna maybe make a statement, maybe ask you a question, and maybe just ask Mr. McLaughlin if he can...
I'm sorry, there's so much echo, I really can't hear. The first gentleman's voice, when I answered, going on paper, maybe maybe the way that he would bring a phone to you or something, I really can't make it out what you're saying.
All right, I will try to be more clear as I'm speaking. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna potentially ask a question to hopefully provide some reassurance. I'm looking at the current special limitations of the lot, and one of the special limitations is for a minimum of 10-foot natural wooded buffer area along the north boundary. And so looking at that, and I'm gonna look to Mr. McLaughlin to confirm, is that the only buffer area required currently?
So let me go to the chair. I heard you just mentioning something about a 10-foot wooded, I think you're talking about it, Ben, but I'm not...
So currently, in the special limitations of the lot, it requires a 10-foot wooded buffer. And when I'm looking at the new proposal, it would be a 15-foot buffer.
The library will be closing at 8:00 p.m. Please plan to complete your visit and check out all the...
Manager.
I think somebody was up here and there's a lot of echo.
Sorry, an announcement at the library came on right as we were speaking. I'm confirming with staff that currently there is a 10-foot buffer through the special limitations on the property. The next, if it was rezoned, it would be a 15-foot minimum buffer. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's incorrect. The special limitations are very antiquated, and the more restrictive regulations that exist today... So special limitations are supposed to be more restrictive than code, but in this case it's the opposite, that current code is more restrictive than the special limitation. We go by the more restrictive of the two, that's current code. So that special limitation is irrelevant. And just to add, I met with Ellie and her dad in person for about an hour, but we went over these issues, and then I spoke with them several times on the phone with her dad and with her separately, and explained to all these code provisions, and we sort of went through the learning of what code requires.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Sorry, Ellie, I just wanted to make sure that that had been walked through with you, and just because you don't have the benefit of being here to hear the rest of our discussion in person.
Are you still there?
Yes, I'm very, very glad that I'm able to understand. I appreciate Francis' call, the better. I still am absolutely ready to understand what the other woman was saying. Is there another question that I'm still supposed to be answering?
There are no further questions. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
So we have heard from public testimony. Now we actually have to go back to the petitioner, and then we can ask more questions. Sorry for kind of interrupting. And you have 17 minutes and 16 seconds to turn the third bottle, if I remember correctly.
Thank you, Chairman Craig Bennett. And I'd like to thank the community for speaking tonight. Hopefully they can relieve any of their concerns. I'll address protecting the residential area to the north, and then comment about the 150-foot special limitation. First, protecting the residential area to the north. Tile 21 code now has been written to protect and buffer different zoning districts since this site-specific zoning was created in 84. Our 4 district already requires L2 landscaping, buffering lower-density residential areas. And if you turn to page 26 in the recent staff analysis, there is a detail showing the 15-foot of landscaping that is now required in code between the two residential zonings. Just for reference, this is the same buffer depth that is required between heavy industrial and low-density residential, 15-foot. I'd also like to draw attention to the slope shading in the detail. The slope percentages go up to above 60%. Current code now has steep slope standards in chapter 7 and chapter 8. Generally, 30% and greater slopes shall remain undisturbed, and all slopes greater than 50% shall remain undisturbed. The three residential lots forming the property north are not just protected with buffer landscaping, but also by the natural slope that shall remain undisturbed. Next, with the special limitation. So with this project, we're asking to clean up some old SLs that are prohibitive to any development and not add new ones. A lot of work went into updating Tile 21 to make each zoning work well with neighboring zoning districts. Code already protects and buffers different uses. Municipal code has district-specific standards, use-specific standards, neighborhood protection standards, residential design standards, and as I mentioned, steep slope standards, just to name some of them. And I think that neighboring lots are already protected by current code without an additional SL. This site is about four acres, and 150-foot setback would encompass about an acre of that. Taking a quarter of the property and placing it in a setback is excessive, especially with the protections and buffers currently in new code. Rezoning this current trailer park site from a majority R4 SL to a common R4 would allow for creating a visually compliant residential tract. The development of over 30 units will require a public process and a hearing either at EDC or here at P&amp;Z. That would be the appropriate time to address setbacks, and any future development would have to conform to current code standards and protect neighboring properties. With that, I hope to relieve the neighbors' concerns, and I'm available to answer any questions the board may have for me. Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. I guess two related questions. The first is just to seek some clarity on what the current special limitations are. And am I correct in understanding that there's a series of, I guess, detailed special limitations that apply to the kind of the main body of the parcel? And then what I'm thinking of is, I guess, teeth, but not kingines, like the, like your front teeth with a gap in between and they go up north. The current special limitations prohibit any, any development on those. Is that understanding correct? You may not be the best person to answer, and I can ask that of staff as well, but...
So it talks about, in that R2 area, R2 SL area, talks about picnic tables, and it says it shall remain in an undisturbed state, that hip, basically that whole slope going to the north, except for unpaid trail system?
Okay, that's, that answers my question. And then I guess, relatedly, in a sense, as a follow-up, given, given the slope and the other limitations in light of shape of those teeth and the setbacks that are required by code, do you, do you anticipate, or what do you view, the use for those teeth being in any future development? And if it's correct that there really isn't a buildable option in there, do you have objection to a limitation that would preclude buildings in those teeth?
So for the first question, you're asking, can you repeat the first part of your question? Sorry.
Yeah, just to understand what, what development might be anticipated in those teeth, given the sloping and the other restrictions associated with it.
So there is no site plan, but I don't, I don't anticipate any building in there. There's really no access from the north, and with the steep slope, chapter 7, chapter 8, the restrictions on steep slope, I don't see how they're gonna be building on that slope. I may let planning speak to that, but anything over 50% you can't build, and this is up to 60. But adding SLs, we're generally against adding any SLs, and from past experience, planning is usually against adding any SLs also. And current code really protects this area now with setbacks and not allowing building on that slope. And like I said, 150-foot, that's, that's an acre. And a setback from a residential to an industrial is only 15 feet landscaping required, which this will have that also, that 15-foot.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions from the commission, I am just gonna assume that we have questions for staff. But I have been wrong already today, so are there any questions for staff? Okay, there are no questions for staff. What is the will of the body? Remember, when you're stating your motion, I guess, button though if you want to make a motion. Commissioner Gardner? And just a reminder, we're gonna be here in case 2021-0013, so we'll need a motion to that case. Then we'll take a vote, and then we'll do a motion to 2021-0114.
Sorry, one report.
For what first?
Yes, 14th is first.
14th.
I'm gonna turn to staff. Mr. McLaughlin, is there one where you want us to take it first?
Comprehensive plan amendment first.
Okay, so we'll do 114 first.
Okay, in that case, case 2021-0114, this is a comprehensive plan amendment to Anchorage 2040. I would move to approve the proposed comp plan amendment to change the land use designation of 0.51 acres from single-family to two-family to urban residential high.
Motion by Commissioner Gardner, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Krishnan. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, thank you. I intend to support my motion. I think the approval criteria identified in the staff packet are met for the reasons provided, and more fundamentally, this does appear to have been a mistake when the land use plan map was put in place. This is a single parcel, the majority of which is already designated urban residential high, including a portion, well, it's split zone, and one of the portions that is currently zoned R2A SL, like the portion of this parcel that is designated single-family and two-family was designated urban residential high. So I think this amendment will just help clean that up and correct that mistake.
Anyone else wanting to make a comment at this time? Seeing no one wanting to make a comment, call for vote. Somebody? Okay. Commissioner Polis?
Aye.
Commissioner Winchester?
Aye.
Commissioner Quinn?
Aye.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishnan?
Yes.
Commissioner Vron?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, that motion passes. Moving on to the next case, case 2021-0113, is there a motion? Commissioner Krishnan?
All right, in the matter of case 2021-0113, rezoned R2A SL and R4 SL to R4, I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Krishnan, is there a second? Commissioner Quinn? Oh, no, Commissioner Polis. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Polis?
I intend to support the motion. I think it meets all the criteria. I understand the public's concern about the hill and everything, but looking at the slopes, it just doesn't look very developable. I don't, I don't see a way that that's gonna happen. It'd be a real tight fit, so I intend to support the motion because I do not think it will impact the neighborhood to the north.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Spinelli?
I also intend to support the motion. I don't think anyone had pointed it out, but it's also in Site 104, which further limits the ability to develop inside of steep slopes. That and according, you know, kind of echoing what staff had said earlier, that SLs are intended to be more restrictive than code, and I think in this case, the current code is restrictive, more restrictive than the proposed SL.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote. Oh, Commissioner Gardner?
So I actually would like to move to amend the motion. I don't know if there's much appetite for this, but, and I might actually look for help from staff on how to craft this, but I'd be interested in an amendment to actually add a special limitation to... I'll wait.
May I have your attention, please? The library will be closing in 15 minutes. Please make your final selections and check out area that was done.
So I guess, I'm interested in a special limitation to prohibit buildings in what I refer to as the teeth, and I just don't know if that's the way to describe them. I don't know if the 150 feet that were suggested by the people who provided comments is a good way to reflect that or not, or if you have a suggestion.
Through the chair, Mr. Gardner, the special limitation proposed by the neighbors is the best wording that I could think of to state what their desire was.
Okay, thank you. And in that case, my proposed amendment is to add a special limitation that there be no buildings constructed within 150 feet of the most northerly boundary of the parcel which has a legal description Wharton NPTN except Dated Track. The area on which construction of buildings is prohibited is that which lies to the east into the west of track C of Wharton subdivision, as shown on the SW 1530 grid map.
Looking to see if anyone would like to speak to the amendment. Seeing no one, I will speak to the amendment. I will not support the amendment. I will not support the amendment. I think, oh, sorry, was there a second? Commissioner O'Quinn? So there's been a motion and a second, so now I will speak to the amendment. I will not be supporting the amendment. I don't think that we should be putting special limitations on there without knowing the full effects or ramifications. I could see something, for example, of the owner giving some of the property to that development down below the hill, and then doing further development to that area that was compatible with the surrounding uses. And without knowing the ramifications of what this amendment would do, I am not going to support the amendment. Would anyone else? Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yeah, so I plan to support the amendment, basically because we heard testimony that there was some sort of negotiated result in the 1980s that resulted in what's referred to in the assembly ordinance as parcel A and parcel B, which I assume are the teeth, though the attachment was not attached to the ordinance here, that basically prohibited all development in the teeth. And so, you know, that's an entitlement that the neighborhood earned and is a tried law, and I think we should preserve it. That being said, I think we should be flexible and allow for the R4 rezone and the rest of the parcel in order to encourage residential development. And if it's unbuildable, I don't really see the harm, so.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, thank you. I propose the amendment and support it for reasons similar to those that Commissioner O'Quinn provided. And in particular, my read of the current special limitations is that with respect to the area identified by the amendment, that would be subject to the special limitation, I think that the current special limitations are in fact more restrictive than code. We don't know exactly why those came about, given the history and a lack of information there. And I don't understand it to have an immediate practical impact on the development of the lot, given the restrictions in place related to the slope. But we don't know how the lot will develop, and if we're, I see the value of having that special limitation included for the benefit of the community, and if some time in the future, we're again in a similar situation, we don't know how it came about, but that will help provide some evidence of the thinking at this time, similar to what happened in 1984.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you. I appreciate the commentary and discussion by commissioners on the proposed motion. To start with, I don't intend to support it. I'm with Commissioner Spinelli in his prior comments with respect to seismicity and the other administrative overlays in place here. And I'll end by saying, sometimes mother nature knows best, and in this instance, we're hearing that the lack of buildability, given the slopes, is driving discussion around that. So therefore, I don't see reason to support an additional administrative overlay to that effect. Thanks.
Commissioner first, Doc.
Thank you. I will also not be supporting this amendment. I would also like to note that there is a R4-zoned parcel, parcels, directly to the east, that are directly abutting from R2M districts. And I'm going to go ahead and presume that there isn't 150-foot SL directly adjacent with similar land uses abutting. For that reason, I don't think it would be appropriate in this specific case to impose that special limitation. As staff noted, I believe that there will also be site plan reviews and potential other means to discuss setbacks and other ways to enforce compatibility in the future. So for those reasons, I won't be supporting.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment at this time? All right, we are going to vote first on the amendment. Commissioner Polis?
No.
Commissioner Winchester? Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
No.
Commissioner Krishnan?
No.
Commissioner Ron?
No.
And I also vote no, that motion, that amendment does not pass. Now we are moving back to the underlying motion. Last call, would anyone like to make a comment at this time? Seeing no one. Commissioner Polis?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishnan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ron?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so that motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner McLaughlin, for coming back to and throw out our second call. Moving on to the next, does anyone need a break? We are going to take a quick five-minute break. All right, it is 7:59, and we are back on record in the matter of case 2021-0066. Can we have your report?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is Track 2 of Carroll Creek Rezone. We've seen Track 1 before in 2019 for the Plan Zoning Commission. That was a rezone. This is all related to the update of the Chiag River Site-Specific Land Use Plan, which is at the end of the staff report. I didn't include the whole thing, but it's just kind of an overview of what the plan, what the Heritage Land Bank had envisioned for these tracks. So I'll begin here.
It is now 8:00 p.m. The site library is now closed.
Okay, the municipality of Anchorage is requesting to rezone one track of land totaling 8.48 acres from CEPI, Public Lands and Institutions, to CER6 SL. The proposed special limitations are as follows. No more than seven dwelling units shall be developed on Track 2. Track 2 of Carroll Creek Subdivision was created by Platte 2018-82. The property is owned by the municipality of Anchorage and administered by the Heritage Land Bank. So the property is zoned POI and needs to be rezoned for the municipality to sell the property. The proposed rezoning for Track 2 is consistent with its land use classification of residential load density in the 2018 update of the Site-Specific Land Use Plan. The 2018 update is the applicable area-specific element of the comprehensive plan for the municipal Carroll Creek tracks. Comprehensive plan directs municipal land use decision-making. Its area-specific element for this site expresses its recommendations as development standards to be incorporated into the site plans, and as such, an accompanying amendment to the Comp Plan is not required. So the Chiag Community Council did not comment, and we did receive one public comment in opposition to the rezone. That can be found in the staff packet, and it was more, wasn't specific, it just listed different rezoning and development issues. So in the matter of 2103-160E of the approval criteria, staff finds that standard 1 is met. This rezone will help facilitate the development of additional single-family houses within Chiag Eagle River and provide homes that are in high demand. The rezone from POI to CER6 residential will add limitations to the property. That's going to limit that to the maximum of 7 dwelling units, which was part of the comprehensive plan framework. Staff finds condition 2 is met. The 2018 Chiag Eagle River Site-Specific Land Use and Comp Plan identifies this site as residential load density, and the following relevant to the rezoning are focused residential development of the northernwestern portion of the parcel, with retention of a large band of open space along Carroll Creek, which is being met, and reserve a route for road connection between the existing neighborhood to the north and access road coming into the Harry McDonald Center. Staff finds position standard 3 has been met. The rezone will facilitate development, which will provide future housing for the Chiag Eagle River area, and the proposed plan to build on residential lots will require a subdivision plat, which is subject to the development standards on page 47, 48 of the Site-Specific Land Use Plan update. Staff finds that condition 4 is met. This rezone is compatible with surrounding zoning districts and existing development surrounding the petition site. So the recreational center subdivision adjoins a portion of the western boundary of the petition site. That's developed at the Harry J McDonald Rec Center and the Fire Lake Elementary School. Residential development is located northeast of the property boundary, which is of this proposed Track 2. And then Park and Natural Resource Open Space Quarter adjoins the south petition site, where the southwest side is what was rezoned in 2019 to the R2A. So staff finds position standard 5 has been met. This will be accessed by Harry McDonald Road, which is classified as a Class 3 major arterial where it meets Old Glen Highway. That sees over 20,000 vehicle trips daily. There's also a future planned connection to Mendon Hall Street, which is a local street classified in the official Streets and Highways Plan. And at the time of the subdivision, the developer will need to enter into agreement with private development to construct improvements to Mendon Hall Street and future connection to the Harry McDonald Road. Water and septic will be provided by on-site systems in the area, and the petition site is within the place area, the Chiag Fire Service, the Subversa Road area, and the Chiag Eagle River Parks and Rec Service area. So standard 6, staff finds that that's been met. The proposed rezone is unlikely to adversely impact the natural environment. It is unlikely that additional traffic generation and resulting noise will increase the adverse impacts to surround natural environment, and the special limitation of 7 dwelling units will allow for each lot to remain consistent with the rural character. Staff finds condition 7 has been met. Any new development on this parcel would be limited to those uses allowed under the proposed special limitations and use-specific standards. Standard 8 has been met. By rezoning this parcel to CER6, the result of land uses would be limited to those consistent with the plan. And standard 9 has been met, the rezoning will not result in a split zone lot. So with that, staff recommends approval of the rezone from CEPI to CER6, subject to the limitation 1, found on page 7 of the staff packet. And just to kind of reiterate, that Site-Specific Land Use Plan that HLB spent years working with the community, there, let's see here, I believe it's even on staff page, under the historical information. We can go to 44 and 45, and those lists, you know, just going back to the previous case you guys saw a couple of years ago, they had a limit of 115 dwelling units on Track 1. Today, we're speaking about Track 2, and they have no more than 7 dwelling units. So these have been, these special limitations we're seeing here have been put in place through this plan for quite a while. So it's no surprise, and it's supported by the community, and the petitioner is aware of it as well. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you for that presentation. My question relates to the land use recommendations, we're just looking at pages 44 and 45, and I just want to know if I'm reading this correctly, and if so, what kind of consideration went into, on page 45, the recommended zoning for the Carroll Creek parcel, Track 2, looks like there's a recommended special limitation for a minimum of 40,000 square foot lots if public water and sewer are not feasible for the site. Is that something that would be applicable?
Okay, so, no, it would, that's something that we didn't recommend because the lots are going to be on-site systems, which have to be larger than 40,000.
Okay.
So it's going to, and it's limited to 7 units. So those will be basically just about over acre lots each.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions for staff, come here from petitioner.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, planning staff. My name is Craig Batte, of S4 Group, representing petitioner tonight. And as staff stated, this is rezone from CEPI to CER6. This is located on Track 2, Carroll Creek Subdivision in Eagle River, and the map is on page 9. The site's a little over 8 acres. The track is owned by the MOA and administered by the Heritage Land Bank. This new zoning, a proposed zoning, a CER6 zoning, is consistent with the land use classification of residential load density, 12 DUA, in the 2018 update of the Chiag Eagle River Site-Specific Land Use Plan. There's one special limitation that the municipality is asking for, and that is to limit the dwelling units to 7. There's no objections from any of the reviewing agencies. All approval criteria are shown to be met. Department recommends approval, and I'm here to answer any questions the board may have.
You have nine minutes remaining for rebuttal. Any questions for the petitioner? We see no questions for the petitioner.
Oh, there, Madam Chair, there is one question.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you. Something I think hasn't surfaced just yet, but I got references to it in some of the staff packet commentary from the applicant and some public engagement. Can you speak to the role this parcel does or doesn't play with respect to access to or through the area and in the parklands? I'm a little fuzzy on the broader context of land in the area, if you can talk about.
So once, through the chair, thank you for the question, once a site plan or a plan comes in, a plat to develop, then there will be access, potential trail access. Land use plan does speak to trails, and it does speak to upgrading Mendon Hall, but there's no preliminary plat submitted yet or designed. But at that time, there will be most likely some sort of trails required by the trails department or the mayor.
Commissioner Ron, do you have a follow-up? Anyone else have questions for the petitioner? Seeing no questions in the queue, turn to public comments. I'm guessing our individual in the back is not wishing to make public comments. Do you have anyone on the phone? We have no one on the phone. So now it's your chance to come back up. And you have nine minutes off of rebuttal, no? All right. Turning to the commission, what is the will of the body? Commissioner Krishnan?
Thank you. In the matter of 2021-0066, request a rezone from CEPI to CER6. I move to approve, subject to the special limitation that staff included in the packet.
Motion by Commissioner Krishnan, is there a second? Commissioner Spinelli, would anyone like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Krishnan?
Thank you. I'll go ahead and mention that I believe the approval criteria have been met, and while I believe there was a single public comment, we did not hear any specific objections that were material to this rezone.
Can you keep Commissioner Krishnan? Seeing no, oh, Commissioner O'Quinn?
I would just add that the rezone is consistent with the hominigated Chiag Eagle River Site-Specific Land Use Plan, and it considers all the special limitations contemplated by that, including the lot size based on the dwelling unit allocation and on-site services.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to make a comment, call for vote. Commissioner Polis?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishnan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ron?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, that motion passes. Moving on to case 2021-0111. And I also vote yes, that motion's passed, but it's moving on to case 2021-0111. Commissioner Davis, it is your turn again, doing your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom Davis, Plumbering and Fire Division, reported on case number 2021-0111. Title 21, text amendment to the R2 zones, height and bulk standards. This is a text amendment to the Ankersville Code, Title 21. The zoning ordinance for the Plumbing and Zoning Commission's review and recommendations through the public hearing. The public hearing closes, the commission will deliberate and bold its recommendations to the assembly. Case 2021-0111, it is, it says, a draft public hearing ordinance, and also for review consideration by the Plumbing and Zoning Commission, is some recommended, department recommended edits to that public hearing draft that are on pages eight and nine of the packet for this item. This case is a reword version of the ordinance that was in a previous case, 2019-0009, that went through public hearing and public process on March 4th, 2019. This amendment is intended to help implement the Ankers 2040 Goals II and IV related to infill redevelopment and provision of housing. It's also guided by the policies for these goals that are cited in the staff report. But it most specifically is intended to help implement actions 4-4 regarding amending Title 21 to allow housing in the R2M district. And secondly, action 7-2 from the Ankers 2040 Plan related to incorporating neighborhood compatibility standards into these Title 21 amendments. The public hearing draft was released and posted at the Plumbing Department website on September 3rd, and was distributed to review agencies and community councils in September 10th, and advertised and posted for public hearing tonight. There were two public information meetings on October 5th, 5th and 6th, and appearance at the Federation Community Council's monthly meeting. Stakeholder meetings were also held on request. Comments were received in time for this packet completion from several agencies who all had no comment or objection at that time. We had also received two comments from the public. Those are also in the main packet as attachment four. One of those two comments from the public were draft comments from South Edition Community Council. Final comments from South Edition Community Council and comments from additional two councils were received on Friday, excuse me, received between Friday, October 29th and today. And those are provided for the Plumbing and Zoning Commission as supplementary packet number one. So the, those, the final comments from South Edition Community Council would, I expect, replace the comments that we received earlier that are in the main packet. The attachments to the packet for review and approval include attachment two, which is a public hearing draft ordinance that is recommended. And again, as I've mentioned earlier, the Plumbing Department recommends approval in the staff report on page eight, nine. Approval with recommended edits one through six on page eight and nine of the staff report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Gardner? First, Commissioner Ron, start us off.
All right, thank you, through the chair. Mr. Davis, thank you again for the recap. Following on some of our discussion during the work session, seeking some guidance perhaps around procedure, noting that the final comments from South Edition Community Council were not fully contemplated, given time constraints and what was put forward for evaluation. How would staff recommend the commission proceed if that's a potential point of hangup in our fully working series tonight?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. We can treat comments that we received tonight through public hearing, that we received recently, both from South Edition and from other community councils and organizations that are in the supplementary packet, we can treat them as like information to consider. Previously, in previous cases, I know we've conveyed to the commission that staff is available, that we're able to provide written responses to comments, as well as questions raised by the commissioners, that we can follow up. Tonight's meeting provides this written comments to the commission, did submit them to the commission. The commission could choose to hold the hearing, either close or continue the hearing, and then once it's completed, it's reviewed the hearing, have requests to provide those. We took a, taken a gander at upcoming meetings with help of the staff, sorry, here. There are two cases on November 8th, there is one case on December 6th. The case on December 6th is the downtown district plan, public hearing, and action by the commission, so that's one case. So there are two meetings. I'm confident we could provide a, issue response, complete that by this week. I mean, the department review of that, being something to the commission towards December 6th meeting might give us more time, give the commission more time to review that. Looks like there are opportunities. There's no commission cases on the 13th, so we could not, so, thank you.
Another question. Sorry. This was just a clarification for my benefit, I didn't get a chance to ask. This relates to the stepback plane, and I'm looking at the graph on page 38 of the packet. And the language says the building shall not encroach into the stepback plane, and at the time of the plane. And my question was, does that include any part of the buildings in particular? You know, we received some commentary and had some discussion earlier about the rooftop, stairwell enclosures, or elevator enclosures. And would those also need to be free of the plane as described here?
Through the chair, the answer is, the parapet wall and the rooftop access enclosures do need to adhere to that stepback plane. And so they would be needing to be stepped away or outside of that plane depicted on page 38. Page 39 is an illustration that's supporting some exceptions to that stepback plane. And the intent of those, the very bottom illustration on page 39, where the roof access box on top of the building is shaded gray, that's intended to convey that that box needs to be, you know, under and not break through that stepback plane.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Spagnelli?
Can you just clarify for me, Tom, I guess for everybody? Even though this proposed code change allows for three-story height limits, isn't it actually more restrictive on building heights and projections above building heights than say a two-story building under current code? Am I correct there?
I've either forgotten, I may have forgotten the answer to that question, Commissioner Spagnelli, but...
Perhaps Commissioner Spagnelli can point to what he's specifically referring to.
Yeah, the further restrictions on incidental architectural features, I thought that that was, those were like more restrictive than current code, is what I, my thought was.
The, yes, through the chair, the restrictions, some of those are more restrictive than current code in that the maximum height exemption for the rooftop stairwell is reduced from 15 to 12 feet. The maximum height exemption for the elevator tower above the 30-foot height limit is reduced for the R2 zones from 25 feet to, I think, 18 feet. The parapet wall exception for a solid parapet wall is reduced from four-feet height exemption to, I think, just two feet. And any, any portion of a safe derailing type parapet wall above that two feet would need to be clear. In addition, and I believe those are laid out on page 36, I'm sure I'm getting to the answer to your question, but then in addition to that, on page 36, lines 30 through 34, or 32 through 33, above the 30-foot height limit, rooftop stairwell elevator enclosures need to be set back from the front facade perimeter of the building, you know, the park facing the street. These changes affect rooftop features that are above the height limit. So I'm not sure, maybe a better, better place to try and answer your question is going to the height bulk transition standards that are, again, on pages 38, 39. So, you know, as far as a sloping roof or two-and-a-half-story type roof, the stepback is intended to be kind of equivalent to what's allowed today. That's really how we tried to calibrate that, so that the type of two-and-a-half-story building height that might be allowed today, that might, you know, expect to see, would be allowed through this stepback plane. And so for that type of building, we're hopeful or confident that we are providing an equivalent entitlement. The stepback plane, its angle of the incline over the lot, it starts from 20 feet at the lot line and heads upward, you know, an eight to 12 rise-to-run angle. So, you know, a two-story building, that would really get, a two-story building might be, you might have a, you know, perhaps somewhere in the neighborhood, 20 feet of height, maybe you have 20, 22 feet of height if you have a flat roof. So if you have a two-story building with a flat roof, I guess you could have a 12-foot tall stairwell tower above that. And so you could have, you could have a two-story building with a stairwell tower today, set back five feet on the side lot line. So you could, you could have, let's see here, I suppose you could have today a stairwell tower that breaks over that stepback plane, but sitting atop a two-story building. You have a two-story building with a stairwell tower today, the two-story building is 20 feet tall, stairwell tower goes up another 12 feet, you have a 32-foot side wall, that's five feet set back. So I suppose the answer could be that yes, in some ways it is a bit more restrictive if you have that kind of building scenario.
Yeah, I mean, and I think today's height limit is actually 30 feet. So if you had this stair tower on top of the 30 feet, it could actually be quite tall. And I had built across the street from some large stair towers that gave the neighbors something to complain about. So I just wanted to point out that this is somewhat more restrictive and protective for the neighborhood. Thank you, your answer.
Any other questions for staff? And I have, we will, we do not turn to a petitioner, since it's presented from the inside, correct?
I apologize, could you say that again?
We don't turn to a petitioner in this case, correct?
That is correct.
And then, do we have any public comments on the phone? Any public comments, that's if you'd like to come out, state your name for the record, and let us know if you're representing yourself or if you're the boundary technical group. And hold on just a second. All right.
Good evening. My name is John Thurler, and I'm the president of South Edition Community Council. And thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening. We just submitted our comments under a very tight timeline. Now, a community council needs at least two months, and normally three months, in order to fully engage the residents. Notice comments to the residents, provide time for discussion. We had a presentation from the planning department, and then to vote on the comments. So these came out on September 3rd, and so that was very hard for us to get all that condensed in such a quick period of time, and that's why your comments just came in. The three-story buildings in R2 zones are not compatible with the scale and character of South Edition. We've seen the impacts of three-story buildings in the R3 areas of South Edition. Three-story buildings replace modest, affordable housing units. Three-story buildings increase the number of large, luxury housing units. It does not increase affordable housing stock in a bridge. We're also in the process of developing a neighborhood plan, and ours is not finished. Been taking quite a while. And we had a draft plan that went out called a comment last fall. And one-third of the comments that came back from the residents were concerned about potential loss of sunlight from higher buildings. We also are trying to educate our residents on the impact of these R2 amendments. And it's very difficult for us to convey how this could impact the neighborhoods without a map showing all the different transitional sites. And we've asked for that, in order to use that as a tool to help people understand how this could impact the neighborhood in the future, and where those transitional sites are located. There is limited R2 land available in urban traditional neighborhoods like South Edition. There is limited R2 land available in urban traditional neighborhoods like South Edition, but there's extensive R2 lands outside of urban traditional neighborhoods for compact housing development. So what we would like is for the three-story amendment, we would like an exemption from the three-story amendment in a traditional urban neighborhood setting. And that would push the development into areas that could accommodate it and where there is a lot more land available. Another thing that we're very concerned about is the administrative site plan review. This is an exception process for any lot in a neighborhood. And it's really not a public process. It allows a potential for more intrusive development than maybe what the current regs are proposing. And there's potential for adverse changes to the core traditional patterns of development within the neighborhood. And does anybody have any questions, Tony?
Looking to the commission, Commissioner Spinelli.
In, I believe in one of your set of comments, you made a reference to, and staff might have mentioned it, a neighborhood district plan. Can you kind of tell us, I guess, what you guys are thinking there? Have you talked to the staff about how that would work? And would that protect your neighborhood? I think that's my impression that a district-specific plan might protect the neighborhood from what I feel you guys don't want.
Tom, can you help me on that? I'm not quite sure what he's asking.
Oh, well, our understanding is that South Edition, what several neighborhoods before is developing a neighborhood plan, which could be adopted as an element of the comprehensive plan, sort of like the Fairview Plan or Government Hill Plan, or them. There is a process entitled 21 for neighborhood plans. Their approval, and neighborhoods or entities can create them and get approval. Outview Neighborhood Plan is a third example of that. South Edition is, my understanding is actively working on that. Those previous plans provide guidance to varying degrees for development. They aren't code, so they would not, not come into play for by-right development that's approved through, you know, land use permits or building permits. The plans do come into play when there's a discretionary approval process, like a, like a conditional use or rezoning or a site plan review. And so if there's a discretionary approval process for, you know, for development called for in Title 21 approval criteria, sometimes the plan comes into play. And if it has some specific recommendations for a particular topic, it could be a consideration. Let me think of an example. You could have design guidelines or policies in a plan. And those, those could be considerations in the approval of a discretionary review process. They would not be considerations of approval for a by-right, you know, what not called by-right, but development that's just, you know, allowed. And I think that Mr. Thirber is probably better aware of their process and their progress towards creating a South Edition plan.
Just one more follow-up. Yeah, so I wasn't dreaming. It was on 84 of your original comments. It said, "South Edition Community Council has started the neighborhood plan process as part of the entry to 2020." And so then, I guess I want to have one follow-up question to you, Tom. If they had a neighborhood plan in place, and let's say there was design guidelines for when you could build a three-story house, would that be something that would play into the administrative exemption section? The three-story entitlement through administrative site plan review? I'm assuming yes, but I guess, could you just elaborate on that?
Can I respond? So, we don't have a neighborhood plan yet. We are in the process of developing one. But within the neighborhood plan, we would have neighborhood compatibility standards. And I think those neighborhood compatibility standards could be a tool that you could measure a new development against. But because we don't have that yet, I mean, we've talked about it and there's been a lot of discussion, but we can't hand the plan, go, here's our plan. So it'd be difficult for us to have a standard that you could measure new development against right now.
And if a plan were adopted and it did have some guidelines or standards related to building height, in a typical discretionary approval process like a site plan review, the answer would be yes, because discretionary approval includes criteria, approval criteria to be consistent with the plan. However, as the public hearing draft is written, the September 3rd release, you know, it's shown on page 40, it reads that the following approval criteria apply instead of the generally applicable site plan review approval criteria. And so basically, it lays out this set of four approval criteria specific to building bulk and height in the R2 districts. And it replaces out the generally applicable administrative site plan review criteria, one of which, that was thrown out, was the comp-plan consistency requirement. So as written, the, no comp-plan element would, would be a consideration. Staff reviewed that as we prepared the staff report, and we, we came to the conclusion that if there were a comprehensive plan element specific to a neighborhood, and it was speaking to the issue of building bulk or, or building height, that it would be actually important consideration. And, and that is why I think on page nine in the packet, among the six edits that the department recommended to the public hearing draft, I think edit five would in fact add back a, a very specific reference to, to, at a criteria that's specific to considering any area-specific neighborhood plans that do, do have guidelines or policies regarding height and bulk. So that if there is an administrative site plan review approval, that that can be considered. And that could be seen as limiting. It could also be seen as helping provide clarity to all parties. But that's a recommendation. So in short, response to your question, short, at the moment, the answer is no. It wouldn't come into play in the admin site plan review, but as recommended amendments, the answer would become yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Spinelli?
Mr. Thirber, have you read through these, the three-story entitlement and the site plan review, these one, two, three, and four? Have you, are you familiar with the?
What page is that on?
It's 40. Just the first one, kind of, it strikes me as something that South Edition would probably, you know, want for, you know, if they were going to implement some sort of guideline. It just says, "The site plan provides incompatible building height that complements or transitions to the scale of adjacent properties, minimizes loss of sunlight access to adjacent properties through buildings and rooftop opportun, opportunists." But it says, "Height transitions, mass placement, or setbacks in changing topology." So I guess, I don't know, I'm kind of reading it as offering some amount of protection. I just wondered what you thought.
You know, I, I, I think you're right in that, pointing that out to me. I think what we're concerned about is without a neighborhood plan, maybe these regulations are going too fast for us. And if we had a neighborhood plan, would you come and be very specific about what compatibility standards or what shared design principles that we weren't followed in our neighborhood? And we're a little bit vulnerable right now because we can't do that. And I think that's what I'm trying to convey. If there was maybe a temporary exemption until we could come back to with more specific guidelines from the neighborhood, that would make us feel a lot better.
Commissioner Gardner?
Just as a quick follow-up question, what's your understanding of, of the, kind of where you are in the process of developing that, what timeline the community has?
So we released a draft neighborhood plan last October. And it went out for public comment for about 90 days. And we got the comments back. And the draft plan went to the planning department, and they have come back with us with very detailed comments. And there's extensive work that needs to be done to address the comments that they gave us. We are, we have a committee that's been addressing each chapter in our draft plan to the specific comments from the planning department. And we anticipate that those that we view will be finished by the end of this year. And then we have to make a decision or recommendation to our community council of what our next step is. If we have to get a professional to help us write the plan, or if we have enough skill sets in our community where we can do that ourselves. But there is still quite a bit of work that we have to do before we can actually present a finalized plan to the planning department for approval. And so we feel that we're a little vulnerable right now because we can't provide that. And so we would like an exemption or a delay in, in these regulations.
Looking to the commission to see if there are any more questions for the individual who was testifying. Commissioner Rahn?
Mr. Thirber, I appreciate the level of effort that you apply to your role with the community council and your description of the process through which you and your board take to ensure that the extent that you can assure it, your community members have the opportunity to engage and provide feedback and input. To that end, I quickly took a look at your draft comments on the 15th submitted to the planning department. And those dated October 29th. And I did notice a few changes in item one and item four. I'm interested in your statement around, would like further consideration given to the issues below before it's presented. Can you enlighten me about anything that did or didn't happen between the 15th of October, the 29th, and today with respect to the comments that you've submitted to the planning?
So we were, we were given notice on August 27th that the planning department would release the amendments pretty soon. So when they came out on, and our community council does not meet in the summertime. So our first community, first community council meeting was on September 23rd. At that particular meeting, the planning department came and gave a presentation. And after that meeting, we came up with some preliminary comments for addressing the R2 amendments. And then we circulated those through, through different committees. And then we presented them at our next community council meeting, which was on October 28th. It was just a couple of days ago. There were some comments at the October 28 community council meeting that, that impacted the changes that you see that were produced on October 29th. And so that's why you'll see a few changes. We were listening and taking comment and incorporating as much as we could, as fast as we could, to get them to you before the hearing tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify at this time? No one? It comes back to us as the commission. What is the will of the body? Commissioner O'Quinn?
I would move to continue the matter until December 6th.
Motion by Commissioner O'Quinn, is there a second? Commissioner Gardner? Second by Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner O'Quinn, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just in the work session, we heard that there were some, there's some interest by the planning department to incorporate some of the comments that we received at the, after the, what do you call it, the comment period. And, and also some feedback that we provided to the planning department at the work session. And so I'd like to give the planning department an opportunity to integrate those comments into their report and any revisions that they might want to make to the, to the tax amendments.
Before I turn to other commissions for questions, I want to ask staff, would our motion be adequately flexible for you to address this? Should we be less specific on it coming back December 6th? Or am I reading too much into my own questions?
Thank you for that question. I'm not sure if specifying December 6th is necessary, and it would be our intent to get comments back, or excuse me, an issue response. Answers back well in time for December 6th. So I don't see a whole lot of, I don't see harm in the date, but that is probably not necessary. I did, I apologize, and I may have not been listening carefully enough. I just want to make sure I'm clear. What is that, was the hearing closed? And is this a motion to postpone to, to the deliberations?
That's a great question. I would be more than willing to say I spoke out of line when I, or I'd be more than willing to say I did not close public hearing, and it would make our roles easier here today. I think in hindsight, that was, given that there was a likelihood it was going to be postponed, I think I would be willing to keep public testimony open. Would that be helpful as far as staff is concerned?
Closing the hearing would make it easier for us to be able to provide an issue response that we know, respond to all the issues and anticipates them. Keep the hearing open, could, you know, could see more comments come in and then more questions.
I, barring comments from the commission, I am going to say that, say that my previous decision that the public comment period was closed was accurate. So even when I do something right, I then make it wrong. I'm really conflicted and make it right again. Turning to the other question, just want to verify, would you prefer a more open-ended deadline for a continuance? Or? deadline for a continuance or is a date certain more appropriate?
You know, open, open-ended would probably be ideal. Our intent would be, of course, to get it back before by any, any date like December 6th, but that might give us the most flexibility to deal with.
Okay, Commissioner O'Quinn, would that be a friendly amendment that you'd be okay with?
Yes.
All right, so the new motion on the floor is to continue this case till a date certain or to a date to be decided by staff. Commissioner Gardner, are you still comfortable with a second? So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Would anyone like to speak to the motion now, knowing that this could be a chance to get information to staff so that they can provide it in an issue response table? Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add a little confidence to the path that you're helping us walk down with respect to closing the public testimony. I didn't hear anything from South District Community Council requesting an extension of time, nor did I hear any need otherwise for additional time to evaluate what's being proposed. I think what we're doing here is just allowing staff to contemplate what has been put before in short order to either influence or not influence what comes back to us. And with that, I don't have any additional questions. Thank you again, Tom, for your, for your work.
Any other comments, suggestions, proposals? Commissioner Spinelli?
Yeah, I'll just add that as happy as I would be to be done with the R2 tonight, I don't see any issue postponing. I guess, I think it'll be better to flush these things out and, and I don't think it'll have a negative impact on the, you know, future development for next year.
Commissioner Gardner.
To say, do I agree with the benefits of postponing? I have a couple of questions that I've written down, some of which were covered in the planning session earlier that I will just mention, that I'd be interested to hearing the answers to. The first in general is just the responses to the issues that were raised in the comments from the community council that we received with our packets. I would be curious to know, to the extent it's available, some of the, some of the data with respect to utilization and density within the R2 districts and if you have it, how it's broken down between the different R2 districts, both currently and you mentioned kind of historically and how that's, how that's changed. I would be curious to know with respect to our discussion about the setback plan and the comments that Commissioner Spinelli raised about how that compares with current code, if it's possible that, I think it could be really beneficial both for us and for the community if there were some graphics similar to what's provided on that page to show how, you know, under some common building styles under current code, how they would, how they compare with the plan. A somewhat specific question on, on page 42 with respect to definition of railings open and transparent and that that rule applies to at least 65% of the vertical surface area. Just if it makes sense to view that as, as a whole, the entire surface area of whatever that panel is or if there's value in kind of breaking that down in some fashion such that you don't have, not that anyone necessarily designed like this, but you've got a large area with 35% chomped and that 65% chomped. And then additionally, with respect to the admin site plan review criteria on page 30, we heard some questions earlier about whether that can be more or less intrusive than the provisions that are available to development, three-story developments by right. The criteria for compatibility, if there's any suggestions or guidance on providing more specifics for that. And then, oh, I'm sorry, page four, not page 30. And then additionally, one of the questions I had was that some of the criteria reference minimizing loss of sunlight and exterior stairs to second story entrance, entries. And just when it comes time to reviewing that, I think it'd be helpful to know kind of what is meant by minimizing because I think without comparison to some countervailing consideration that that would, to my mind, mean it's not allowed. If that makes sense? I can pause if I go too fast, I apologize.
I actually missed that very last part. It rhymed with the word loud and I couldn't, couldn't quite hear it.
Yeah, so some of the criteria reference minimizing as in E1 minimizing loss of sunlight access and then E3 minimizing exterior stairs. And I think it'd be helpful to know exactly how the planning department anticipates that specific criteria being applied. And I say that because my perspective is that without a countervailing consideration that is kind of balanced against that, to my mind, minimizing means zero that effectively. You can't have any loss of sunlight access or any exterior stairs. And then another question on the administrative site plan review criteria is E1 references compatible building height, complements or transitions to the scale of the adjacent properties and E2 references width and length, complements or transitions to the scale of single-family and two-family development anticipated by the zoning for the area. And so I'm not sure if that's intended to, to look to what, what's anticipated or what is currently in place or if there's a difference between one and two with respect to what we're comparing that with. And those are the items that I'd like, that I'd be interested to learn more about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, I think I got that.
Any other questions, comments for staff? I mentioned this earlier in our work session, but I think my main area of hangup is also with the administrative site plan review. I think there's a lot of aspirational language, which I understand the need for, but again, I do not know necessarily what we're measuring it against. And also I'm not quite sure if there are base guidelines because right now it does seem like in the very middle of an R2 zone that potentially there could be a situation where there is a more intrusive development. And I'm not sure if that's the case or not, but I am not sure if I see enough there that would ease concerns that I have. Last call for questions, comments for staff. Seeing none, this item has been postponed. Oh wait, is there someone else?
Do we need to vote on that motion?
Oh yeah, we can vote on the motion. Call for vote. Let's start on this end to put some pressure on the people over here. Commissioner Ron.
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips.
Yes.
I also vote yes. All right, that motion passes. Mr. Davis, thank you again. I know we gave you a lot of research, but counted as justification. And Mr. Yell, I can't remember if you were the first one here or not, but somehow you threw the short straw and you are the last one to put that, so it's good.
Time to talk about your, thank you, Madam Chair. Assemblymember John Wellington presented AO 2021-74 to amend Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21, Section, Title 21, Chapter 8, Section 050 Improvements and Section 060 Subdivision Agreements to Clarify Soil Contamination and Cleanup Requirements for New Subdivisions Within the Municipality. The text amendments to Anchorage Municipal Code Title 21 to establish cleanup standards for contaminated soils discovered during the subdivision process. Title 21 does not currently have a defined level at which contaminated soil must be restored to. The remediation of contaminated soils is regulated by the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation under Regulation 18 Alaska Administrative Code 75.340 and 18 AAC 75.341. The code amendment will codify those standards and provide consistency between municipal and state soil remediation requirements. It will also protect residents and utility ratepayers by reducing both known and unknown costs associated with excavation activity within contaminated soils when installing and maintaining public facilities and utilities. The planning department does recommend approval of the text amendments subject to the following amendments to remove unnecessary language, ease reading and provide consistency in code structure. And on page two, you can see that amended language and my apologies to the commission, I didn't provide an explanation of exactly what is going on here as far as the formatting. So this is legislative language and anything that's capitalized and within brackets is being deleted, anything that's underlined is being added. So it does seem rather aggressive in, in the amendments proposed that we're deleting a substantial portion of the proposed language. However, in the department's opinion, a lot of this language is either duplicative, is unnecessary or does not apply. We would like to clarify that if the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation use the appropriate acronym, which is DEC or its successor in case it's ever renamed. And the language that is being removed or proposed to be removed is as may be updated or amended and that's because it's assumed that regulation is going to be updated and amended over time and utilized by the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation. It's also assumed that DEC uses these regulations. Any cleanup required under this section will be consistent with the Arctic and Western Area Contingency Plan. That particular plan is not utilized by the Department of Environmental Conservation Contaminated Sites Division. That applies to spill prevention. So it's just not applicable to including this language. And then the, the next sentence approved by the Department of Environmental Conservation approved only at a level that will not require institutional controls. This language really confused the, the department because it almost insinuates as if the municipality has the ability to dictate when institutional controls are being imposed and the municipality does not in any way. That's the call of DEC to determine whether institutional controls are going to be placed upon a property. And also the cleanup standards that it points to are cleaned up to a level that would not require institutional controls. So it seems like we're, we're saying you have to clean up the level to a certain standard, but it shouldn't also contain institutional controls which we have no ability to apply. So it, it just doesn't seem necessary to us. And then lastly, we just want to include or otherwise deemed appropriate by DEC on the tail end of it. For section two, just a very minor amendment to replace the word prompt with timely and that's simply a code language consistency issue. The word prompt doesn't appear in Title 21, but the word timely does. So it just makes more sense to put timer. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have this evening.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Ron.
Thank you through the chair. Mr. Yell, I have so many questions. I almost don't know where to start. I guess I'll start at the top of why. DEC regulates this. It has not been in Title 21 code presumably for a reason. So help me understand the big why.
Through the chair, Commissioner Ron, that, that's a great question and you're absolutely right, DEC, this is their ballgame. The municipality does not have any interest in entering into the realm of cleaning up soil contamination. What this would do is it's going to provide a level of certainty for developers within the municipality that they won't be held to a stricter standard than what the state requires.
Thank you for that response. I'll let it stand and not ask them any other questions that could fall off.
Commissioner Spinelli here?
Hello.
Anyone else wishing to answer a question or comment at this time? Seeing no questions or comments, are there any members wishing to testify on this? And if you could state your name for the record and if you're wishing to testify on behalf of yourself or a group?
My name is Bill Taylor. I actually own Collins and Rogers and I'm here representing myself as owner of also the Anchorage Home Builders Association.
Just as a clarification, are you one of the board members of the Anchorage Home Builders Association?
I am a board member.
And have you been, just so I know how much time you get, have you been authorized to speak on their behalf?
Yes, I have.
Okay, well then you will receive five minutes.
Five minutes? I don't think I need that much. And Commissioner Ron, thanks for allowing me to talk this evening. Commissioner Ron, I'll hopefully be able to answer maybe many of the multiple questions by my story. So I brought this incident to Senator Wellington because I was developing the subdivision on the Abbott Road. There was a home stand that had an old fuel tank that contaminated the soils that we discovered as we were doing excavation. And so we called timeout. This was in an area that actually happened to be within a future dedication of a municipal nightway. It was still private property at the time, but it was going to be dedicated, that's right with me. And so we met with municipal engineer and the municipal engineer could not make a decision. He sent it to the legal department. And the typical standard for soil is cleanup is 250 parts per million, some equivalent of that, I can't remember exactly what it was. It came back from the legal department that I had to clean up to 35 parts, which is almost not quite seven times the standard, which kind of blew me away. And they, my environmental engineer told me at the time that his instruments couldn't even detect 35 parts per million. They could detect 250 parts per million, which is the ADEC standard. And so myself, the Anchorage Home Builders Association, Senator Wellington felt that the only fair way to deal with this problem was to send it or to use the state ADEC standards. They're very well established and have been on the books for years and years. And to force me to clean up to a standard that was unachievable almost, just seemed inadequate. It basically took a $15,000 cleanup and turned it into over $95,000. So Senator Wellington was kind enough to look at our request, draft up the documents, everything back and forth, you see a lot of language that was the result of this. And I think this is something that the development community and the building community really needs because it takes away the whimsy of a decision like I experienced where we were going to be forced to clean up to a 35 part per million standard when the, when the ADEC standard was 250. So it's important, I think, that the industry has some degree of certainty when we're out developing, that we're not subjected to a standard that one administration may say is 35, another one may say is 90, another one may say is 145. another one may say is 145. It's very unpredictable. So I think, Commissioner Ron, that's why we pushed this forward, because of really my experience. And so I wanted to share that with the commission tonight, and I'll let you ask any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Ron.
Mr. Taylor, thank you for speaking directly to me and the question that I posed to staff, and retelling the story as you experienced it. One of the concerns I have is around the path of the remedy itself. And one of my concerns is Title 21 really the right place to firmament a standard or add clarity or clarification? If it's a legal ruling from the municipality itself, perhaps there are other means and methods by which that clarification can be made. I'm struggling to see the fit and the potential conflicts that could maybe not exist today, but be created in the future in taking this approach as it's proposed for Title 21.
Well, do you feel that the, through the chair, where do you feel that it would be appropriate? Because, I think, let me check the section. This is in, yeah, it's P21. At least as it's written, all of the sections are 2108050.
Mr. Taylor, my understanding is that this would be additions to Title 21, and that the, unless I'm completely off-base here, sections S and A3N would be new text. Is that correct? Question over to staff.
Through the chair, that's correct, Commissioner.
So I am still confused. I mean, Title 21 is Title 21, correct? I'm worried as to where it falls.
Mr. Taylor, my understanding is this is a new addition to Title 21. It's breaking new territory for Title 21. And I would, I guess, wrap up my commentary to you by saying that my position, don't let my position on how I think this shouldn't be included in Title 21 discourage you from finding other means and methods to accomplish your goal.
So, through the chair, just so I understand again, if we have an existing Title 21, I think that that is probably correct, and because it wasn't in that language, you don't feel that the existing Title 21, and it is an addition to Title 21, that wouldn't be appropriate?
Yes, what I heard from staff and in my personal position as a commissioner of planning and zoning and interpreting the purpose of Title 21, I don't see it, this topic is being fit as presented in the way it has been, or sliding into Title 21, that's what I'm.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for your testimony. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to testify, it comes back to us, the commission. Do we have any other questions or comments for staff? Or what is the will of the body?
Just a quick question for staff. With respect to the second proposed amendment changing prompts to timely, it just occurred to me looking at that, and I don't know what all the usages in Title 21 are where you see timely, and I recognize that prompt isn't in there. But to me, timely suggests that there must be some kind of deadline that goes along with it. And I'm wondering if it's anticipated that there would be a deadline in the subdivision agreement that that would relate to? And if not, if you would prefer something that's more like prompt, that doesn't rely on a deadline?
Through the chair, Commissioner Gardner. So we did think of adding a specific time requirement, but the time requirement would be specified in each individual subdivision agreement, whether that's boilerplate language or whether it's unique to a given scenario. But it would be specified in any agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Wallace?
Is there? Working on the table. Is there any reference to ABC requirements in like mass or any other documents? Do you know?
Through the chair, I'm sure there is, but I am not an expert in mass.
Just trying to figure out if this would be the right spot, or if it's already called out somewhere we're not thinking about this. What I'm trying to figure out.
All right, through the chair, I mean, it is stated why as well.
While Commissioner Wallace is doing some research, does anyone have a question to buy some time?
It's not exactly ABC.
Commissioner Wallace, could you please speak into the mic? That brings us back to the commission. What is the will of the body?
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. In the case of 2021-0120, the proposal for text amendments to AMC Title 21, Section 2108050 improvements and Section 2108060 subdivision agreements clarify soil contamination cleanup requirements, I make a motion to approve.
And I just want to clarify, is that subject to the amendments on page 2? I'm not sure if they can.
Yes, thank you. I guess that does fit as department's recommendation of sections 1 and 2 as ordered in the staff act on page 2.
All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Ron. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Ron, I'm going to give a 2ED on the mic.
Thank you. I do not intend to support the motion. I think I played that card early in the case there. For the reasons as discussed, I appreciate the commentary and the experience that Mr. Taylor talked us through. That said, after the discussion therein, I still don't believe that, as proposed, Title 21 is the right place to overlay something on top of what's already required in terms of state requirement code.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Spinelli.
I intend to support the motion. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Ron. I don't like to have extra codes. But having heard Mr. Taylor's story several times and discussed it with municipal staff involved in the situation, and I've been involved in some soil cleanup on municipal railways myself, so I guess I'm not new to it. I just think that something is needed to establish, to reference what is the baseline standard, and that's what this is attempting to do. So I intend to support.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion? All right. I will call for a vote. Commissioner Ron.
No.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Wallace.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Commissioner Ron, who is going? Everyone voted yes. All right, and that brings us to Public hearing karaoke hour. Who's going to pick us off? No one? All right, call for adjournment if anyone wants to make a motion. Commissioner Quinn, is there a question?
Board member comments.
Oh wait, Commissioner.
Just wanted to get on the record. Would appreciate Assemblymember Wellington revisiting us here planning and zoning. I understand it can be difficult on the same.
Commissioner Ron, I'm going to ask you to speak into the mic for your comment.
Thank you. Before we get out of here, I just wanted to, for the record, note Assemblymember Wellington has put forward a few AOs. I would appreciate what he's available to coming forward to TNZ to provide a little context and direct input to those AOs, noting that he has some conflicts with the assembly itself, but would like to hear from him for future AOs.
Thank you, Commissioner Ron. And I believe I have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Quinn. Is there a second? Commissioner Wallace is second. We are adjourned.